I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To fight- -of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next is approval of minutes from the February 6, 2019 meeting.
Let's make that a motion.
Second.
Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Assume.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Under Communications, um, we have seen recently, um, some, um, people who have passed away and I wanted to just, um, mention their names and just up a brief statement about them. I think it's something that we should do on occasion and I invite, um, anyone who would like us to do so, to recognize some of our, um, folks that aren't with us anymore. And I think it's important for us to do that, um, so a moment of silence for at least three people over the last time since we met have passed away. One is Mr. Tom Serra, who was very instrumental in making sure that we are safe in our fire and police departments, particularly because he is a couns- was a councilman in the city of Middletown and spent a lot of time on the dispatch committee with the town of Portland and protecting our citizens. Mr. Serra was also a principal of Vinyl High School and many people, um, went to school to Vinyl under his leadership. I know he was a coach as well with Lupeire and he also served as the mayor of Middletown. In addition, Mrs. Paula Petzel passed away. Petzel's longstanding business and community in our town and were said that she has passed. And, um, also Mr. Mike Dowley, who's an attorney who's spent a lot of time on cases in Portland. While he did not live in our town, he certainly was a big part of our community. So, just a moment of silence for people who have passed our way and will not any longer. So, thank you. So, they'll be memorialized in our minutes and I think it's a nice way for us to remember the good things that so many people do for us in our greater community. Any other communications? Jim, I think you had something you wanted to mention.
Yeah, I just think it's something that the board, um, to be aware of and it's something that I think we might want to talk about in the future, but there were some communications about the Middletown press, um, making a corporate decision effectively to begin severely limiting the amount of coverage that's going to happen and limiting the amount of time that we have folks, um, in our town. And I think that that's our, it's very important that we get, uh, a fair amount of coverage, that we continue to get that fair amount of coverage. It helps get information out to the residents and it keeps it informed populace. So, that's something I think we have to talk about going forward.
Thank you. And we also had a communication from, uh, Mrs. Gary Orsata-Jay and Mr. Orsata-Jay. And I did, um, respond to it. Has to do with the Ethics Commission. And, um, I know that this board has on its agenda and has had for probably since the last board, um, the need to look at the ethics ordinance. So, it is something that I thank you for bringing to our attention and it is something, um, that I have broached also with Joe McQuade. Joe McQuade is our labor attorney and he has spent a great deal of time, um, advising this board in the past of changes, um, to the ethics ordinance that not this board particularly, but when Ben and I and Mike were on the last board, we had brought to our attention and at that time there was not an interest, um, to take it up. But I mentioned it to Joe and I asked him to, uh, bring back some of those comments that he had. And, um, I also checked with the town clerk's office and I told Mrs. Gary Orsata-Jay that there are minutes and there are documents within the, the ethics file in the town clerk's office. Now, there are some per the ordinance, some documents that they do not make public and those no one sees other than the Ethics Commission. So, I did, uh, convey that. We apologize our website, um, and Dave, um, is working diligently to get everything back up, but a lot of our documents are being transferred over to the new way of, of the website operating.
Basically going over to a whole different format. Uh, so, our website is very, very deep. It's an antiquated old content manager software going over to a newer format, which is going to be, uh, hopefully much easier as far as in relation to a learning curve. So, a lot of departments could be able to post their own stuff and so forth, but it's just migrating all of that old information, I think, over. So, thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Dave. Um, and I know too, Mrs. Gary Orsata-Jay had asked about executive session. In terms of tonight, there are a couple of land acquisition. We checked with FOI, um, that we do not have any, um, purchase and sale agreement on, so we're not going to say anything about them. They've been brought to my attention that I'll be conveying to them. So, it's not appropriate to mention them on the agenda. However, we will be talking about the Brownstone Avenue Riverfront property in terms of some additional information that they brought to us, um, in testing the pipe. So, that is something that we will talk about. That already has a purchase and sale agreement, so that's why it's mentioned here. Um, there may be some possible action taken on that. Um, I don't, I don't know at this point, but I just wanted to clarify those two items. And I think that's all that I had. And I will put, again, it's on our agenda tonight and perhaps when we get to follow-up, we can talk more about, um, what you would like to do in terms of the ethics ordinance. I think it does need, uh, attention. I agree. I do think that it is an ordinance that we should review and we will, uh, be proceeding with that. Anything else from the selectmen or any questions that you have?
Maybe a little input when we talk about the ethics ordinance-
Yep.
-from, uh, the chairman of the Ethics, to see that, you know, whether they have particular issues with certain parts that are already, it's a good starting point. I would say we should definitely get a little input.
And with that, um, we'll move on to Mr. Bauer. Under Communications, he wanted to highlight for us a resolution regarding fracking waste and some updates on that and then later on in the agenda, it is an action item. So, Chairman of our Clean Energy Task Force item.
Thank you, Susan. So, what I thought I'd do is, uh, just, uh, first off, everyone has got a copy of the resolution, the testimony I just handed out, uh, the CCM Connecticut Conference of Municipalities testimony. That's got the bright blue banner at the top. And then, um, you have, should have a copy also of the ordinance which we passed three years ago. Okay. So, um, let me start with the CCM testimony. And if you look on the front page, about a third of the way down, uh, in bold, these are the two things that the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities is, is asking for in their testimony. So, number one, they want DEEP to regulate, evaluate, and enforce the fracking waste, uh, in Connecticut. I'm not really sure why they don't have the word "ban" in there, but, um, I'm not going to nitpick. Uh, and number two, include language which, which preempt any municipal ordinances that have been enacted. So, this is CCM's, um, stance, uh, as of February 20th. All right. So, um, if we could, I'll, I'll let you guys read that at your leisure. The highlight is, is right there in bold. Okay?
Quick question.
Sure.
With regards to that, is your resolution, please request the passage of that as soon as possible, but obviously they made a comment amended.
Right.
So, do you want to have language that says like the unadulterated, unamended version?
And, uh-
If they change it in the meantime to whatever they want, now we would be approving or to the amended.
Right. And, uh, Ralph, what I'm going to do is I'm ex- I'm going to explain why I feel that CCM, what they're asking for is, um, inappropriate. Uh, it's not comprehensive. Uh, it would be a step backward from the ban that we have.
I, I will interject that I did get a call from CCM today-
Yep.
...and they said that they have spoken to at least one of the committee chair people-
Right.
-and they have asked that they not consider, uh, the ban on municipal ordinances. They legally, because they've already submitted testimony, they can't rescind testimony because it's already been submitted, but they've asked that that not be included. It's a conversation. That's all that I was told.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, some good news at least.
Because some other towns have contacted them besides Portland.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, all right. So, let me just quickly summarize the, uh, the resolution. It's a little weighty, I, I understand. Um, it's a fairly nuanced situation. So-
There are some extra copies. I don't have enough for everybody, but I think nearly everyone. Excuse me.
Yep. No, that's prob- no problem. So, the resolution, uh, just, it defines fracking and, uh, and the problems that have been associated with fracking and, uh, oil and natural gas that comes from non-fracking situations. Uh, the resolution goes on to state what the state of Connecticut has done. The loopholes that are created, uh, by the, uh, moratorium, um, and finishes off with our ban and essentially we are asking, passing this resolution would be asking, uh, the legislature to pass a statewide ban on fracking, which mirrors what we have done in Portland and 56 other towns across Connecticut have already done. So, um, here goes. "A resolution in support of Senate Bill Number 753, an act concerning the statewide ban on fracking waste. Whereas Portland's Clean Energy Task Force researched and found that drilling and extracting oil and natural gas uses many processes, hydraulic fracturing, AKA fracking, being just one of them. Whereas these extraction processes use many hazardous chemicals, including carcinogens and hormone disruptors, and whereas these extraction processes produce copious amounts of liquid and solid waste in the billions of gallons, with these toxic materials mixed in it and can also include radioactive material and other naturally occurring toxins, and numerous problems have arisen due to the inadequate testing, processing, transfer and handling, storage, and inadequate treatment of this waste. And whereas the state of Connecticut in 2014 enacted a temporary moratorium, moratorium on certain wastes." And I'd, I'd like to, um, this is the middle school teacher in me. You've got a writing implement. I'm going to ask you to put a check mark next to all, all the loopholes. Okay? So, "moratorium on first waste, first loophole, but only from fracked gassed wells." Okay? So, that's loophole number one. Obviously, waste from fracked oil is not covered. "And directed the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, otherwise known as DEEP, to develop regulations to manage this waste, and DEEP has yet to present those regulations. Uh, in fact, they're two years past their three-year moratorium." So, right now, the moratorium is sort of in a ongoing continuing resolution, I guess. It's, it's, it's going to stick until the DEEP, until DEEP does something with it or the legislature. "Whereas the temporary moratorium contains no language concerning the waste from non-fracking sites." So, that's loophole number two. "And no language concerning the status of the moratorium if DEEP fails." So, that's loophole number three. "Fails to meet their statutory mandate and federal exemptions may still apply to toxins in this waste when DEEP comes up with their regulations." So, we're not guaranteed of a ban coming from DEEP. We're, um, we have yet to have any indication as to what type of regulations that, that DEEP would do. So, that is the fourth and most important, uh, loophole. If I may do a commentary on the side, I don't really know how it takes five years to just say no to this stuff, but that's just me. I'll move on. "Whereas Portland's Clean Energy Task Force maintains that there is no feasible method for DEEP to safely regulate and monitor the use of radioactive and chemical toxins in waste, some of which can be produced out of state and permitted to be processed into byproducts." So, again, some commentary. "Waste that are produced from oil and gas wells are exempt from key provisions of other federal laws, which makes it highly improbable that DEEP can effectively monitor from cradle to grave or from well to wherever, outside of their jurisdiction and safely regulate this waste." It's really, the legislature five years ago put DEEP in a really tough spot. Moving on. "Whereas byproducts used in other states as de-icer and dust suppressant have been proven to be contaminated with high levels of radioactive radium, excessive chlorides, lead and benzene, and solid byproducts used for brownfield remediation fill have shown to be unstable to build on. And whereas byproducts are not fully covered by the temporary moratorium and are legally free to enter communities that do not have a comprehensive ban in place." However, in Portland, so the next, "whereas the, the Portland Board of Selectmen unanimously approved a comprehensive ban on all ways from oil and natural gas extraction activities in May of 2016." So, we're protected in this town from the stuff that goes on above. "Whereas the Connecticut General Assembly has introduced SB Number 753, an act concerning the statewide ban on fracking waste, which will mirror Portland's comprehensive ordinance and removes the mandate from requiring further state regulations." And then 11 and 12, "be it resolved, town of Portland supports and requests passage of SB 753 as soon as possible with no compromise or weaken of language and no preemption of the ban passed by the town of Portland." Last one is just simply, uh, the folks at the legislature that, um, that we would bring this to. So, um, it's a lot, I know, but it's, it's also at the same time, it has to be, uh, it has to be direct in certain areas because, as I pointed out, of the loopholes in there. Questions?
Mike, a quick question.
Sure.
And you may have answered this before, um, in a different way, but what, what drives the difficulty in something like this? Now, to me, it makes sense that if you've got chemicals in there that can cause harm and the whole bit, which is why this board unanimously approved this, you know, back in 16. What's driving the resistance? Why, why is it so difficult to get something like this done at a state level? And you can, yeah, because, because it seems to be no-brainer from a legislative point of view.
I'll be blunt and this is 100% Andy Bauer's opinion. I think we're, we're talking about money. I think we're talking about power. Uh, I, I think, uh, there is, when you, when you dredge up all this stuff and, uh, you have brine from prehistoric seabeds and it comes back, the, the industry refers to the stuff that comes out of the well as produced water. All right? So, when you, when you have thousands of gallons of really salty stuff and maybe more than that, what do you do with it? Well, we all know we put salt on roads. So, if you can, if we're running out of places to put this stuff and you have salty water, you might be thinking, hey, we could put this on roads. I mean, that would be a perfect solution if it were not laced through with the chemicals, the toxins, and the radioactivity. But, um, Jen Siskin, who I've worked very closely with over the years on this issue, shared with me her testimony, um, that, uh, road salt got processed in another state, not Connecticut, uh, found that the bags found their way, uh, to like a Lowe's or a Home Depot type and found that, you know, they're, they're radioactive. They're sitting on the shelves of the store and they're radioactive. So, um, you know, I, I don't have really a good question or a good answer for you, Mike. I, I think, um, some of the attitudes I run into have, have, have been kind of like, it's not all that bad. It's, you know, it's, uh, it's like we have toxins all around us, which is, which is true. That's a true statement. We have naturally occurring radioactivity, which is true. So, what's, what's a little bit more? So, there's the question that sometimes I get is what's the big deal? It's a little bit more. My position is, why do we have to put up with even a little bit more? Why add to it? Right?
Are you guys getting out-lobbied? Are there interests that are spending money to keep this thing in this kind of state of limbo?
You know, uh, two weeks ago, I, I wondered out loud, why, why hasn't, why isn't the Board of Selectmen, and Susan in particular, a past president of CCM, why wasn't she consulted in a town that CCM has to know? They have to know the towns that have passed this. Why wouldn't they communicate that? That's not a good sign. Uh, I, you know, I've been doing these types of things long enough so that the first thing that, uh, me and my colleagues do is we will go up and we'll ask somebody, hey, wha- what are you doing this for? What's, you know, can we, can we meet? And if you can work something out, uh, we'll do that. And, and I've been, uh, privy to situations where that in fact has happened. But I don't, I don't have a really good answer for you. I, I can only guess.
I'm just curious.
And I, forgive me if my guesses are, are off the mark or, or on complimentary, but Mike, I, I wonder that all the time. I wonder why this ban hasn't happened statewide.
Well, and the other thing that, again, to my point of view doesn't make sense is I know there's, um, the concoction that the oil companies and drilling companies use is protected. It's because it's patented or-
Proprietary.
There's some kind of legal protection so they don't have to resolve, even though they may be, and it sounds like they are, dangerous, maybe carcinogens. And I don't understand that part of the law, how you can patent or get protection from that and still be able to dispose of it in maybe a watershed or other places. I don't, I don't quite understand that part of the law.
Uh, I think because of the power of our fossil fuel industries at the federal level and they had those exemptions written into laws which you would think would protect us. Clean Water Act, Clean Water Act.
EPA can't do anything about it.
Um, EPA has to follow the rules.
Yeah.
Which is, again, uh, three years ago, I, one of the things I asked you guys is use common sense. We, we're at, we're in a situation here where we can, um, I don't ma- I don't mean to sound as arbitrary as will come across, but it kind of is. We, we can, as a town, as a state, we can make laws which say, "Common sense dictates that we do this and not subject our citizenry to these toxins." So, that's what we're going to do. Kicking it to the DEEP was, again, I think DEEP, I, I love them. I think they're great, but I think they are not well-equipped to be able to handle this.
And just one last question.
Sure.
Uh, has there ever been a challenge to that law, either from a, at a state level or an organization level, that they've challenged that part of the law?
Uh, the ban?
Yeah.
Or, um, not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah. Not that I know of.
Because that never costs money, right? Challenge something.
No.
So-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I think what, you know, while we talk about this, it's, to me, it seems extremely critical that we get this done at a statewide level. Because I know there's three of us that have been meeting many times to talk about water in the town of Portland.
Hmm.
And one of those directions is looking for a regional solution. And so, when we craft that solution, there's going to be assumptions made in that solution about the quality of the water all the way through to whoever might be any of our sister communities that may be part of that solution. And if there is nothing to prevent them from taking in this material that could possibly damage the water sources, that way we, we may be talking about a water, a solution for a region.
Right.
It's kind of, you know, troubling.
Yeah. And I, I would just, uh, you know, to, I know you've got a, a large agenda, so I, I'll, I'll answer as many questions as you want, but just what risk, what this resolution does. It just asks legislative leaders to pass the ban. Doesn't cost Portland any money. Doesn't do anything you guys haven't already done before. And I applaud you once again for passing the, the, uh, the town ban, but this is just, hey, guys, can you get this done on the state level?
Thanks, Andy. We're, we're going to take it up in a, in a few minutes also.
Yep.
And there was just one last thing under Communications that I wanted to, um, share with the board. Um, we've got a, gotten a letter, a couple of letters recently in terms of questions about, um, our land use office. And I've shared them with you. Um, and one of the elements that we are, um, looking at, um, as a town is in terms of, uh, consulting for a planner. And when we had the Almcreft application, as well as another application on Route 66, um, there was someone that we used for, um, some consultation. Her name is Terry Han. She works, um, in consultation with our engineering firm. We, however, are going to be looking at a lot of changes, I think, over the next couple of years in terms of good economic development, in terms of some additional applications coming forward. Um, in particular, and I'll mention a couple, uh, Rainard Place. Um, we heard from them this week. Again, they'll be in on Friday to file the traffic investigation report. Um, we have another large project that's going to be happening on Route 66, um, that, um, Ben is familiar with, I, I know. And then we also have, um, some other endeavors at the corner of 17 and 66, which is another potential mixed-use development, which is Gary Queen is going to be building a new building in that area. Um, so, on a future agenda, um, I'm going to put on there an RFQ that I'd like the selectmen to look at. And I'm also thinking that we should have our land use, at least our land use commission chairman. That would be planning and zoning, inland wetlands, zoning board of appeals. Um, they're going to be looking at perhaps some of these applications, um, from our residents as well as businesses. And I think it would be helpful to make sure that the planner that we have for consultation is properly, uh, qualified as well as properly funded, especially since we're entering the budget season. So, I'll put together a draft. I'd like the board's input on that and see how you'd like to proceed. Because I think it's something, been asked a lot of questions about it and I've been thinking about this as well, particularly since we know we're going to have, um, quite a bit of, of, hopefully, positive development. Um, and with that also comes the need for conservation. Ben?
The only thing I would add is, this is nothing new to Portland. I think we went through the same thing with Deanna Rhodes took over for Nancy Muir. I believe she was a certified planner when we switched her into the position.
You're right.
And I would say, where is Ashley's intention to become a planner?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. So, I would say, obviously, this is nothing new. I think Portland's demonstrated in the past on an application where they feel necessary. They have brought in, as you mentioned, uh, outside council. So, I would be careful. I, I was a little disturbed at some of those letters, uh, referring to that office as not doing, um, a qualified job. And coming from probably the person that's had a, a lot of dealings with them, that's not a fair statement. I think they're all professional. Um, I think they all care about their jobs and I think we should, um, definitely before we do anything, we should talk to Ashley and find out what her, because I thought we hired Ashley with the intention of eventually switching to that position.
However, she's the land use administrator, Ben. She's not a, she's not in the planning department. And I'm thinking as we go forward, um, that I'd like your input. I'd like the board's input as to whether you would like to see a consulting planner. Not someone that would work full-time for us. I don't believe, unless the board thinks differently, that there's a need for a 40-hour-a-week, I think it's AICP, American Institute of Certified Planning, um, in that office. However, there, there are times when we need some assistance in terms of, uh, oversight and perhaps some insight as to how the regulations, um, can be looked at. I'm not talking about this board getting involved at all in this area because we don't get involved in planning and zoning. The only thing we get involved with is providing the appropriate resources for people, which is our employees. And, um, we are looking at some, um, potential big, uh, projects coming up. And there will be questions that will come up. And I want to make certain that resources are available, um, and that it's something that we all agree with. Ralph?
There was some discussion at, you know, you can tell me, uh, committee yesterday about this and I think it, you know, the point that I made in our discussion, I mean, Ben, there was that, I would like to situ- see a situation where whoever is in that role gets consistent. Because my concern is, you know, just-in-time town planning, I, I don't think that's going to work. I think you need someone that's there for the ride throughout the process because there's, you know, these are not short-term, you know, Rainard is not going to be a short-term process. You know, the ones that may be going on at 66, they're not short-term. So, that would be my only concern is if you, if you lose that continuity or you have new people coming in and they, you know, you lose that, now we got to ramp them up to have an understanding. That would be the only thing I would be-
Yeah. I, that's not what I was thinking of, of.
No. But I would, I would also say you got to, you got to be careful, Flash, you got to be careful going down this road.
I agree.
Um, Ashley is in the position to know the regulations, I think. That was what her job is and it's few and far between that you ever need a consultant. The rules are pretty clear.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, unless you don't want to, or you wanna create something else. The rules are pretty clear and everybody knows the rules, the applications are filed, and you have a common engineer who reviews the process. Um, so I would, and I would be careful, uh, obviously, you mentioned Terry Han, unless something's changed. She was not a certified town planner, uh, in the past, unless something's changed in the past few months.
Yeah, she's, well, she did speak with me about that, Ben, and she said that she will sit for the exam. I don't know how often those exams are given, they may be annual.
But my point is, you take a Terry Han, and you take an Ashley, to me, Ashley is more qualified. Ashley's in the town, Ashley knows the regulations.
Oh, absolutely.
Ashley knows, you know.
I agree.
Most of the properties, I don't believe, I know, kind of, it's like consultants, it's, it's the, I don't think there's a magic wand here to fix any problem. I'm not even sure a problem exists, that at the end of the day, rules and regulations are in place, and the board, and the commission, they vote on their own regulations, when they wanna change them, how they wanna change them, or if they wanna change them. So I'm not convinced, um, I'm not sure I see, you know, where, unless, you may know something I don't, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna close the door on it.
No, 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 I just wanted to open it up, because there's been some, uh, some conversation on it, as well as I know that many of these things are coming down the road. So I wanna be prepared. Luke?
You know, and I, I agree with, you know, everything you've said so far, but I think that maybe, similar to the times when we hire an attorney or by, uh, if there's somebody out there that's a planner that may know some more, or at least in conjunction with Ashley, can answer the question or deal with the rule, uh, more accurately, uh, so that we, as board members, uh, feel comfortable that everything is being done properly. So I can see some advice if needed, or consult, consultation if necessary, so, um, and, and I don't know who Ms. Han is, but, uh, if she's worked with us before and does a good job, she might be able to work well with Ashley and to, the two of them, uh, address an issue that may not be, uh, that easy.
I mean, at the end of the day, I guess, I've seen this firsthand, at the end of the day, you're just getting another opinion. The only thing that matters at the end of the day is what that board and that commission feels comfortable with approval. If they don't like something, they're not gonna approve it. Um, I don't believe there's anything, unless somebody shows me, that to date, that Ashley has not been able to address. I think, I think.
I, I agree.
I was, I really didn't like the way, a couple, you know, at least one of those letters was written, that was not fair, um, to Ashley. It wasn't, so I don't mind saying that.
I agree, I think our land use staff does a very, very good job. I just wanna make sure that when questions come to this board, that I bring back to you your, your options. So that, I feel, is my job, I brought it to you, if you don't wanna proceed, we don't need to. Um, I just wanted to make certain that I brought back to you options.
I think a good way, at least, I'll be with, if somebody in the town of Portland has a major issue with that department or how things are run, I urge them to come to this board and inform us of what it is. We've had a couple people that have, uh, made accusations that I don't think were founded, and I think that might be where the department, I wanna hear what it is, and if we have a problem, we're all gonna fix it. I haven't seen a problem yet, so that's where I stand. But I, if I want any input, if anybody in the public, feel free.
I'm trying to, I was at the meeting with Ralph last night, so the first, uh,
Uh, EDC has talked about this for, for a couple of years, actually, cause they are on the forefront of economic development projects. So they know, um, what's coming down the pike before, um, before the rest of us do, so.
So I wanna get a, just ask you a question, so you're suggesting, or?
Option, it's just a question.
An option, okay, that we look into a part-time position?
No.
Or it's more of a will call?
Yes. We already have it through, um, LADA, which is a, uh, association land, uh, land use company in Simsbury, they work with, um, Jacobson Engineering. So the person that's been working with us and has provided consultation, her name is Terry Han.
Okay.
So she has been, um, our consulting planner when major projects come along.
Okay, so we're, we're dealing with the same person each time? It's not like we have, we get a, somebody that's doesn't, is new to Portland and we gotta ramp them up?
But on occasion, we go out for RFQs for all kinds of, of projects. And, um, I thought I would bring this to your attention, if you wanted to go out for an RFQ again, she may apply, she may not. Um, and I, I'd also say that certain projects, um, there may be, uh, just like there are within, um, engineering firms, within lawyer firms, um, within accounting firms, there's expertise in certain areas. So we are looking at water, I mean, who was it that mentioned it?
Pardon?
Well, Ralph, Ralph mentioned it.
Right.
I mean, this is a major, major decision.
Right.
And we're gonna need some assistance with that. And you're gonna need engineering assistance, economic assistance, um, the state DEEP, the State Department of Public Health, um, the Council of Governments, and I would also argue a planner. Because they will look at the needs of the community and the future needs of the community. You know that we have a, a traffic, um, it's actually a corridor study, they call it, but they're really looking at the traffic on Route sixty-six. And as the opportunities arise for more development along sixty-six, um, how do you manage that in terms of resources and so forth? So, I'm, I'm not asking for any decision tonight, I just wanted to raise it with you under communications, since it came in as a letter. And I received another, um, letter, and I called that person back and spoke with him about it. And, um, he happens to work in the area of land use and architecture, so he wanted to give me some input as well. So, again, it's nothing that we need to do tonight, um, we can talk about it certainly during budget season. But when these issues come forward, I think it's important that this board think about it. Um, and I think it's important for my office to bring to you some options that you can choose among, or, or not.
Could we find out when Ashley is going to sit for the test, or?
Sure, absolutely, I will speak, I will discuss this.
Well.
When we downgrade the position, it was to.
Yep.
I would say from my experience in business, oftentimes it's best to try to promote from within.
Yes?
So we have to be careful.
We do that often.
Yeah, you've done a good job with that, from what I've seen so far. Um, but to what Ben's saying, that we should definitely, um, look at the talents of Ashley and, you know, maybe we have someone that could be elevated, and then you bring in some other supporting cast, um, but.
Just like we do within the Public Works Department, we bring in, um, different engineering firms that have expertise in pipes, or expertise in, you know, water, sewer, um, expertise in, um, other areas that, that we need. It's, you, you have to, uh, be able to.
And what you did with, um, what occurred over the years with Deanna.
Yes.
I mean, that was like, that was like homegrown talent, I mean, you know, and she just grew into the job and she, she did a great job. Unfortunately, she got marketable and we lost her, but, um, you know, maybe we can repeat the process, because we had a pretty good run with her.
That is the plan, but even, even, um, with someone that's fully qualified, there's always, um, another point of view that can be helpful when you study something, so. I, I don't wanna dwell too much, cause I know we have some public comment tonight, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we can discuss it later. So, um, we'll open it up for public comment.
Inova Marushak, ninety-seven Middle Sixth Avenue Extension. Before Rocky was adopted by Mr. Bell, the ACO evaluated Rocky to be adoptable. Approximately four months later, Rocky bit a man. A dog that had been in the Portland pound was deemed to be suitable to be adopted, then bit a person. It seems to be a major liability issue for Portland to continue to adopt out dogs from the Portland pound. If a mere four months later, the same dog could be so aggressive that he should be killed. Yet multiple dog evaluators said he wasn't aggressive since then. When you vote tonight, please remember that treating Portland residents equally and fairly is very important, or your decisions will be seen as favoritism or discrimination. In regards to this mediation, this process should never have gotten to this point. Facing a decision on a personal feeling about a person is wrong. Will every dog owner whose dog bites be held to the same expectation? Will they have their dog taken away for three years, then be told to put offense, put, to put up offense to comply with dir- directives given by this board? Only to have this board make a random decisions based on personal feelings? Long after your vote tonight, the public will remember what happened in this case, what was decided, and how future similar issues are handled. Please do the right thing for Rocky and Mr. Bell. I want each of you to put yourself in Mr. Bell's shoes. What would you do if your beloved pet was taken away from your, from you forever? Does this mean any dog in Portland that bites won't be allowed to go back to the rightful owner? I have read the resolution and do believe that this is still more on the side of the town, and that this, this decision is not quite equal yet, and I hope that will change tonight during the vote. Thank you.
Kim Nagy, Marushak, ninety-seven Middle Sixth Avenue Extension. I don't think I'm gonna get through this without, um, getting emotional, I just have to say I'm extremely disappointed. Um, I had words to say tonight that, you know, I, I'm just gonna speak from my experience. There's a dog, um, that I walk by every morning, at least once a day, sometimes twice a day, that killed another dog here in town and was allowed to go home. I now cross the street to get away from that dog, because it lunges at us when we walk by. That dog was allowed to go home, that decision was made by the ACO. How is that not considered a liability for the town? Yet the whole crux of this has been, oh, it'll be a liability for the town if we let Rocky go back to town. Where Paul put up a brand-new fence in his backyard, lives in a much more, um, secluded area of town than Main Street, Portland, would be coming into a lot less contact with people, yet this resolution is going to say, not in my backyard, we don't want this liability in our town, send it to another town. Like my daughter said, the ACO let this dog get adopted out, then turned around four months later and said, oh, whoops, I think we need to kill this dog, based on pressure from the town hall. And now we're going to turn around and say that it's okay to continue to adopt out dogs from the pound? How is that not a huge liability for the town? That you're letting these dogs out and then they're turning around and biting? So I'm super frustrated, disappointed, and just surprised by how this board is acting. Um, the, it's, Ben mentioned, um, around town a lot, the words favoritism, unequal enforcement, and I feel like this is only perpetuating that belief in town. So from here forward, is it going to be that anytime a dog bites, we say that's it, that dog can't live in the town of Portland, send it somewhere else? Because that's what this whole, um, resolution is surmising. That this dog bit somebody, and now we need to do something about it, so what is our decision? Can't stay in Portland. It said something about public input was considered. I'd say that public input from the victim was given more consideration than the, the dog owner. And that, again, is disappointing and surprising. So I urge you to think long and hard about this decision, and like I said, moving forward, this will impact every case. And I know that the public will be watching, I know I certainly will be watching, and will be considering my vote in November, seriously, after this tonight. Thank you.
Um, Melissa Guerrier, Saturday, one-eleven Collins Hill. Uh, just wanted to clarify, uh, no, I wanted to say thank you first of all, for acknowledging the letter that I had sent over. Um, just to clarify, the complaint is strictly in my name, not my husband's. So just to clarify that. I also, I know that I have to have a wet signature copy, so I have that, I'll give it to you on the way by. And I have copies for all you gentlemen, because I'm good like that. Um, second thing, so, I'm going to agree with what was just said, this is precedent. This is a precedent that you all are gonna be held to, that every dog that runs into this, this is going to be the expectation, that the dog must leave. That's the expectation that you have all set. When that expectation is set, and it's in writing, guess who holds you to it? I do, these people in the room do. This is the precedent that you have set. I also think that it's interesting that you're, this precedent is set. And as I was going through and reading the resolution, a couple things had jumped out at me. The first thing that's, uh, about the disposal order being issued. Well, there's been talk of the disposal order being rescinded, but there's nothing about that in here. And that's something that's very important to have in writing. The other thing that I think is really interesting is, a lot of times when a homeowner has, or a taxpayer has an issue, and we've gone to town hall, and I'm using that as a blanket statement, we hear, oh, it's a civil issue. Oh, it's a civil issue. Well, this was a civil issue, and it was a civil issue that was decided. So, once again, precedent has been set, where a decision was made by the powers that be, you all, that, well, maybe not in this instance that was a civil act, you know, that, that it was a civil issue, maybe not in this one. So, again, precedent is set. So the last thing that I'm going to kvetch about is, I think it's great that we're looking at planning and zoning, um, and we're looking at having, you know, somebody in planning as, at a, as a whole. Because I know since Ms. Rhodes has gone, I don't believe there's been anybody there. We need somebody, just like we need a zoning enforcement officer, we need that consistency. We don't need a part-time, we don't need people that are playing the role when it fits them. The town's attorney is not the zoning enforcement officer, or planning and zoning. And that is what, from the outside looking in, it's what it looks like. So that needs to change. There's also a concern, when I hear the words homegrown talent, I used to think, that's awesome, because everybody should have a career path. In our environment, it makes me very nervous. Because with that homegrown talent, we run into the favoritism. We run into the selective enforcement. And this isn't a one-off, or a two-off, or a three-off, or a four-off, this happens a lot. So these are things to be consider, you know, that you have to consider. And I think that's it. All right, thank you.
You have a copy of this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to reiterate something that I think you said, Ben, and that is, and I just wanted to echo that. Um, we have some very good staff, and you gave them compliments, and I just wanted to know.
And I said that, and I think I did it from the chat of health when they came in, when they were left for ages, because I've dealt with them a lot.
Robert Sataj, one-eleven Collins Hill, and, um, I echo, um, Melissa's sentiment, and, uh, also, Ben, you said, you know, comment if you have. And, uh, you know, I, I agree with you, uh, to some degree, that, you know, there's, the, uh, town staff's doing a good job. But I, I disagree in that, if we keep doing the same thing, we're gonna keep getting the same results. And over the last thirty, thirty years, we've had two select people in the town of Portland, and by my observation, Portland hasn't advanced a heck of a lot in those thirty years. And our, our bond rating is gonna come under pressure eventually underneath the economy we're headed into, uh deriving most of our revenue from property tax, and the economic base has to grow. So, a new set of fresh eyes uh could look at this differently. And an expert consultant in how to grow the economic base while maintaining the character of Portland. So, I, I think you should really consider some new blood, some new fre- uh some fresh ideas. And uh also include our, our current staff who are very dedicated and doing a great job. And with regard to uh Mr. Bell's situation here, I just wanted to bring to the attention of Mr. Bell and perhaps others regarding the um this uh town ordinances with the power, section five oh four, power to overrule town meeting actions. All actions of any town meeting, except the action of annual budget, uh annual town budget meeting, shall be subject to overrule by a town referendum in the following manner. And that's a petition. You just need a certain amount of the uh people to sign that petition, ten percent of the registered voters. And then that petition served to the uh town clerk, the town clerk takes that receipt of that petition, and it goes to the Board of Selectmen. And then a referendum's put up, and as long as a certain amount of the voters come out and vote on it, they can overrule what's on that piece of paper.
I, I think, Mr. Sataj, if I could, um, five oh four, I, if you have it in front of you, that is the power to overrule action of a town meeting. Not any action that a town takes. So, on occasion, you may come and vote in a town meeting, and there's a certain period of time, I believe it's ten days, I don't have it right in front of me, I believe it's ten days. And there can be a petition filed by a certain, and I think there's a number there as well, I just don't have it in front of me, to referendum. But that is the instance of a town meeting, not a town action.
I think the other thing to point out here is, this would have to be agreed upon. This decision cannot bind in any way unless Mr. Bell agrees to it. If he doesn't agree to it, which you have that right, we're gonna continue down the path we are, whatever that is, that's what's gonna happen. That's what's on the table tonight. This is not gonna be law. This is an agreement between two parties.
This is your proposal.
Correct.
Which is, this is your power of the polls.
This is where we're at. This is a proposal to Mr. Bell, to settle the lawsuit. If Mr. Bell does not agree, entitled to that, he doesn't agree to it. We are then still on a path. That's, that's what's gonna go on tonight, right?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure we were all there. This is gonna be binding unless it's agreed upon by the whole party.
Yeah, and there are certain actions within, as Mr. Sataj pointed out, five oh four, which is power to overrule the action taken at a town meeting. And then there's another section within the Charter that tells us what has to be decided at a town meeting. Um, and there are many actions that can be decided at a town meeting. So, it's not any action, but rather.
I wanna say, I just wanna say something really fast. I think it's awesome that this interaction just took place. Because it says that that book is used as a reference, and the ordinances are used as a reference, but it also goes to show that it is outdated and it needs to be looked at. Because if we were so quick to say, hey, this, it's great that you looked at it, but this is what it really is, then the stage should be done for zoning ordinances and other ordinances that are also not being enforced properly. So, if we had the time to make that change, to make that judgment call, and do the look up here, we should have the same thing, taxpayers should have the same respect given to their complaints as well.
And, and within zoning, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission does, does often get asked to change zoning regulations.
I'm talking about enforcement. You're not the zoning enforcement officer.
No, no.
But I have, I, I improved that you did enforce it. So, you can go down that path, and I'm just, that's all I'm gonna say at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, did you wanna speak?
Dave Murphy, forty-fourth Drive. Excuse me. Just a quick couple comments, um, 'cause this one just popped in my head, it's the executive session. My personal opinion, it, it should be reserved for personalized personalities and litigation issues. And it seems like, in the name of transparency, everything else should be discussed in public. You know, this, this riverfront land acquisition, what is secretive that the public can't know about? To me, that, that bothers me, to be honest with you. Um, the second thing, I was gonna say something at the last meeting, I didn't, I held off, but I wanna support Mr. Bell. And I just think it's ridiculous that this has gone on for three years, and that this board, you gotta realize one thing, there may not be a right or wrong answer, but there could be a fair answer. These are people you run into in Dunkin' Donuts, these are people you live with, these are people your kids go to school with. These are all friends, you turn out your enemies. You make a simple decision, what, what's the worst that happens? Something happens, well, something's gonna happen too, somebody's gonna slip on a sidewalk and sue the town. Are you gonna prevent that? No, you're not gonna prevent everything. So, sometimes, there's not an easy answer, but there's a fair answer.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Paul Bell, one-eighty-seven, Old Marble Turpik. There's one major part with proposal that we've already gone over, gone through time and time again. And yet, we keep coming back to the same thing, and that's at the very end. If Mr. Bell, the town's attorney, shall draft and oversee execution of a stipulated judgment, setting forth general terms outlined above, and such releases as deemed necessary to absolve the town of any further liability related to Rocky. Rocky is not your property. I hate to say that an animal is property, but he is not your property. Otherwise, I'm sure those people would have sued you too. That's just not how, it's, there's no way you could be held liable for a piece of property that you do not own. It's the same reason if you're gonna adopt out every dog in the pound, how are you gonna be held liable for the person that takes possession of the dog? 'Cause it's not your possession. This is something that we keep coming back to, meeting after meeting. We've discussed this at length before, we've even come up with no evidence where the town has been held liable for a situation where if somebody was to get a dog, and then turn around and sue the town. There's no evidence of that, there's no evidence of that in the state. So, it's in the proposal that they're, you're worried about getting sued. It's not your property. Plus, this has already been handled. It's already been adjudicated, there's already been a settlement. And yet, Rocky still sits at the pound after being reviewed by five, five times about his disposition, demeanor, everything. They don't seem to find a problem, five times! I mean, I'd love to get him out, period. But this has carried on for three years, so, like I said before, we can't, I'm not gonna be able to set precedent for anybody else's dog, anybody in the room, any member of Portland, anybody in the state. I'll bring this to my attorney to see if he'll look at it. I'm sure he's gonna flip out. I just, just to put it mildly, this is like a non-proposal proposal, like, who else has fought for their dog this much? I won't give up, I've told you that, I'll come here for the next ten years. So, I hope, moving forward, this is your proposal. We could work on a different proposal, some other option to move forward. I'm willing to work with you, and I've said that every time I've come up here. Come to my house, call me, speak with me directly, come visit the dog. Mr. Pelton came to see the dog, and that was the only member.
I have visited.
You've visited, but have you actually met the dog, touched the dog, pat his head, you know, just, you, looking at a dog, you don't get an assessment of how the dog is, you don't understand anything about the dog. Please come with me, Karen will be there. I'll show you myself. What, what are you referring to? As far as him going to another town? Well, that in itself doesn't make any sense. If he's good enough to go somewhere else, why is he not good enough to be here? With somebody that's been with him all this time, with all the trainers and all the, like, you, you think like, I'm gonna get the dog back and then, hey, have at it. You know, I don't want him to have an issue ever again, I want him to live a long, healthy life. That's where I want him to be. I just think, who better knows the dog than me? I mean, I put up a fence, I've got surveillance cameras, I, I, I mean, what else? Is there, that you asked me to, and then you have to come up, I don't know, I can't, well, you should present insurance. Why did we go through that whole process to turn around and say, why doesn't he go somewhere else? Now, had you had, if you had asked me that in the very beginning, would, would it be alright if, uh, acceptable to you if he went to a different town? Maybe at the time, I would've considered it, but we are three years into this. At this point, that does not make any sense whatsoever. Especially, how am I gonna find somebody that would get to know that the dog, people see, think pit bull, they, they, they're automatically, they don't know, they don't understand. I'm sure I could find somebody, maybe. But, you know, if we're gonna send him to East Hampton, we might as well say, well, he's good enough to go to Iowa, or we'd probably like Florida better, it's warmer there, so. But, this doesn't make any sense whatsoever. This is not an answer to, or a resolution to what we've all been working on. Especially, all the work I put into that fence, the person that helped me, Aaron Skelton, Skelton, if he was here, I, the next meeting, I'll have more people that have been supporting me along. I haven't asked anybody to come, I haven't posted anything on Facebook, I'm trying to be reasonable. So, let's be reasonable and think this through. The town cannot be held liable, I don't know, you gotta get attorneys to, to talk to you, 'cause it's not how this whole thing works. So, please call me, you know my number, you know my address? Discuss it with me, however you want, I'll, I'll, I'll come by the office, set up a time, call me, and I'll come by your office if we could discuss it further. But, this is not a legitimate, or, it's your legitimate proposal, but I don't really find this to be acceptable. I'm thinking about the dog. The dog going somewhere else does not make any sense whatsoever. It's obvious I care for this dog, it's clear. I care about this dog very much, and I will not give on him, up on him. I tell him every day, "My precious Rocky", he has a tag on his, on his collar that my dad, I found in my dad's drawer, when, 'cause he, he died during the period when he's been incarcerated here. It's easy to remember, 'cause I say it to him every day. I tell him, "My precious Rocky, I love you, and I will never leave you. When you see one set of paw prints in the sand, it was them that you carried me."
Everybody to move in? Next item on the agenda. Um, I put on here if there were any questions on the budget report that was distributed last time. I know that we didn't have it on the agenda last time, so just in the event you had any questions, I uh put it on here. We will be uh meeting in March on the budget detail. Um, there is some information out from the governor's budget, and um there are some surprises. And we'll be putting together our uh, our report to you by the end of next week. Any appointments to boards and commissions? Tonight? Okay. Then, under new business, um, letter A?
Alright. Um, can I stipulate that this, doesn't have to be read all?
Yes.
Okay, great. So,
Yes.
I'm gonna submit, I guess officially, the resolution authoring, authorizing the settlement of pending litigation involving Rocky Bell. I would ask that this be submitted into the record without reading the whole thing?
Wait, the reading.
Yeah, wait to read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I'd like to say a few things. Obviously, we've seen a lot of faces, everybody's come, and I, I do appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna probably speak for everybody up here in the room, because obviously, it's tough for all of us to make decisions like this, and I don't think it's the easiest thing in the world. Um, I think David Murphy had a great quote, and he said, uh, you know, right, you know, right and wrong, and, you know, you're a hundred percent right, and we have to look at all aspects, and it's tough, and you're on the board. Um, you know, we have to look at everything, and I think, uh, obviously, there was a person that got bit, we'll call that the victim. We have a dog owner that really loves his dog, we have to look at that, and we have to look at the whole town as a whole. Here's the situation, the situation with the dog, our animal control officer made a decision. Right or wrong, at the time, the animal control officer made a decision to put the dog down, that's where this started. It then went and got, Susan, what's the department that we?
Agriculture?
Agriculture, went up there, and they upheld the decision. And that became a lawsuit, Paul had the right to sue, Paul did sue, to try to save the dog. So, from the beginning, this dog was being put down. Um, here's a resolution, the dog's not gonna be put down. A few things were said, but it was Paul that made the statement that, well, it's not good in this town, or, you know, how's it good in another town, so it could do that effect. And that's not how we're looking at it. We're looking at it as, there was a victim in this case that happens to live on that road. They have to be taken into consideration. There's other taxpayers that have opinions, and just like you guys, and I agree with a lot of yours. At the end of the day, this dog was gonna be put down at the beginning of this. Here's a resolution that can save the dog, put in a good facility, hopefully, um, they can make the work. But, this is what I think the majority of this board has indicated, the path that we're on, and uh, it's, it's not even, we'll just check, uh, I think, somebody mentioned, um, precedence, and it was just Marushak, and said we're, you know, setting all the precedents here. And uh, I think we gotta point out, there was a scale on the bite mark. And I don't recall the scale or what it was called, but it was pretty severe, four out of five, out of five, or something. That's the type of things that are taken into consideration when the dog is to be ordered to be put down. Keep in mind, to ever end up here again for precedence, a dog needs to be ordered to be put down. Has to be upheld, has to then go to court, somebody has to sue, and we end up here again. The odds of that are very slim. I think most people acknowledge when a dog bites somebody, they want the dog down, that happens in a lot of communities. That's the norm, this is not the norm. Here's a solution, that the dog lives, and I think a lot of people, that was very important to, um, including myself. I, I, if we can achieve that through this resolution, I think we're heading in the right direction, so. If I think of anything else, I'll add it, but. Oh, and one more. Uh, you mentioned, Mrs. Marushak, sorry to point you out, you mentioned, uh, you walked by the dog on Main Street, you heard, you went into the road. You walked by the dog that bit another dog, that's a dog on dog. Once again, these are state statutes, and maybe that's where you really gotta push the direction of this conversation, not necessarily through this board, but through the state, that's who's setting the, the rules. And dog on dog, they get released, dog on human, you have the ability to put the dog down. You know, not to simplify this, but that's why in that case it isn't, but, um, I think that's all I got.
I, I'm gonna add to what you said, I mean, what you said, I think, um, describes how we all feel about this. This has been an incredibly emotional thing. I mean, I've had a chance to talk to Paul a number of times, and a number of the people that support what's going on, as well as other people that haven't come to the meetings at all. And it's, it's just an incredibly difficult thing. And what you had said about the dog on dog, and, and the regulations and the rules, I know we've talked to Paul's attorney, what you had said about the dog on dog and and the regulations and the rules, I know we've talked to, uh, Paul's attorney, um, and he's a big advocate for kinda changing the rules and changing the laws and making those better. We've had discussions both in these meetings and also, um, among ourselves individually about, um, they probably should be looked at, they should probably should be examined, and, uh, they probably should make changes on that. And I think the time has come, uh, to relook at that as well, because a a dog that bites another dog, that makes you afraid enough to walk down the street, um, probably should be looked at in a similar way as a dog that bites a person, right? I mean, to me, it seems like that would be something that would be in the same category, right, that would cause fear with you and someone else, so. I think there should be, I know, um, I think, as Susan, you had mentioned, uh, there was a meeting or organization had gone to for, um, for the state that was starting to look at that. Um, and and I would encourage, and I I'm not saying that this, cuz this certainly hasn't been resolved, this won't resolve this tonight, I mean, they'll they'll be, you know, we'll continue the process and other things will happen, but I think that may be a really good thing to to focus in on as well. I know I certainly, uh, wanna, um, contribute and help in that way and and see, um, you know, what can be done in that end from a town level and certainly at a state level, but I think, um, I don't know, I just, I'm just saying what you've said as well, but I just, it's just a difficult decision, and we just hope we can get this resolved in a way that that is fair, as you would say, Dave, right? So.
So.
Ralph?
So you guys caught a couple of things that I was gonna say, but, um, yeah, I I mean, I don't think there's any anyone on this board is not gonna say that whatever the rule is that we have in our town is extremely incomplete. And it allows for these type of events to occur, and ambiguity, trying to figure out what the situation is with the facts. Um, we hope that something at a higher level, and I know Susan participated in those meetings, you hope that they'll come out and put a little more definition behind what occurred, because I I know you, you, you know, speakers have come up and have spoken about all these attacks going back to this time and that time. But the nature of the rule allows this ambiguity for at least the attacks to occur, and the decision that could be made, it can be, is made on that rule. And I don't know how, ways to saying you set precedent by doing something seventeen years ago, I I don't know if that's really establishing a precedent, you know, in the court of law, so. Ultimately, it's really critical that the rules really get cleaned up and more defined, so that we're not in this situation, um. You know, and and again, it was pointed out, again, this situation with the dog versus dog, it's a different, you know, and that was noted, and that was one of my points as well. So, you know, with regards to, um, you know, with regards, and and certainly, I I'm the one that always gets quoted about speaking to, I'm speaking for the whole town, not just the twenty or twenty-five people that come here, and that is very true. And I will stick to the point that, and I know, there's been a passionate group of people have come here and spoken on behalf of Paul. But it still comes to the fact that when I go out there and I ask a question to people outside that group, I have yet to have a single person say to me, the dog should go back to Paul Bell. Not long, I'm probably around twenty people now I've asked, I've never, in in fact, most of them are dog owners that have said, the dog shouldn't have been put down. Which has never been what I want to do, but I'm just using as an observation that I, you know, there is a perception that this is the will of the people within the town, it's a majority, and I haven't necessarily said that. Now, I haven't taken a full poll of everyone in the town, but from my own observation, what I've spoken about and asked people, and I've asked them without any bias either way. And that is the response that I've gotten. I know that there's discussions about whether the town was liable, liable on this, well, liable or not, worried about lawsuits or not, it comes down, again, to safety of the town and whether we have concerns. Well, I looked at it from the standpoint of concerns about whether someone else would get bitten by the dog. And the last thing, and I know that one of the other things that's been talked about and chimed in about is, well, it's gonna be, we're paying for this dog to be there, we're gonna have more, uh, legal fees. Well, at the end of the day, if you think it's the right decision, and there are some legal fees that have to be taken on because of that decision, then that should drive more than, well, we should do what's not right, so that we can avoid legal fees. So. You know, there were other comments I had, I don't think they're appropriate, really deals with, a lot of the comments have been made throughout the months where things were said, and I, it's difficult because I've read through all the documents, I've read through the s- the statements from behavioralists, from from the trainers, and you know, there is a lot more material that's out there, and it's frustrating not to sit here and and really get, you know, lambasted for not looking at it. I I was diligent in any information that I could look at, I could look at it, I've been by Paul Bell's house, I know I didn't go up there, but I could see from the road based on the opinion of Pete, the behavioralist, and the trainer that had, he had take, that he had gotten with his lawyer, on behalf of them. It spoke to the height of that fence, and it was not to the proper height, I could see that right from the street, I could see that it was not the proper, it was chicken wire, it was not the proper fencing, so. Again, that was not something I put in, it was not something that the town put in, it said, let's go get someone to evaluate, these are people that evaluated on behalf of Bell and his attorney. So, um, I just, uh, I just wanna make the point that I know, and I know a lot of us, we have spoken a lot about this situation. You're obviously seeing that, we've had executive sessions on it, it's not like it's taken like, it's, I'm not gonna walk out, regardless of what we vote today, I will not be happy, but that's just, there there is no happy here, I don't think. Whichever way we go, it's just a matter of going, whichever direction we're going, and unfortunately, I don't see a happy ending to this either, so. Those are, those are what I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well stated.
Yeah.
I think that.
Move.
Just like to add that, you know, everybody has said, and I I commend what, uh, Ben had said earlier, is that, and and as well as Ralph, that there is no easy decision here to be made. Uh, there is an owner, there's a dog, there's a love between the two, uh, there's a victim who was bit viciously. Uh, there has been a process of dealing with this situation, uh, we respect the people that have come forward to talk. Uh, we have heard only one time from the victim and the victim's wife, but that night was very, uh, compelling of what she had to say. So, uh, in my opinion, this resolution weighs the concern of all people, or all persons of interest, keeps Rocky alive, which is one of the aspects that was discussed early in all of the things that we had talked about. Um, and most importantly, due to the mo- the very serious previous attack, this is in line with the town ordinances and protects the residents of Portland.
Anyone else?
Uh, just, I think everyone's kind of summed up a lot of it, has, you know, said a lot of it already. Um, obviously, this has been a tough issue, um, there's all, it's, it's a complicated, and there's a lot of different factors to look at, we've discussed as a board a lot of them. Um, this resolution that we're looking at is intended to try to get to, I think what we think is the fair answer, the fairest ground, right? It preserves the ability for Rocky to go somewhere and live a full life. It preserves the, um, some respect, uh, for the wishes of the victim, um, I agree, actually, it was, I think, even, and even in the pe- appeal, it was determined, um, and commented noted to be an unprovoked and vicious attack. Um, having seen the pictures that were presented to the board, um, you know, i- it was, these were serious injuries, this was not a, this was not a, a passing attack, this was a serious event. Um, I do think that this strikes a balance between that, tries to get to something that's fair and is respectful of the folks that have been here and wanna see Rocky preserved. Uh, Mr. Bell, who I think has an honest, um, desire for Rocky to be preserved, as well as to respect the victim's right to this case, so, I think that's where we struck the balance.
You ready for?
To sum it up, one, some, you know, when you have something this tough, neither side's gonna be happy at the end, that's how you know you've come to a good conclusion, I I doubt if the Demerus are happy with this situation, and I doubt if Paul's gonna be happy with this situation, but I'd just like to point out, here's a scenario, the dog can live. So, having said that, back to.
Ready for the question?
Sure.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and discussions have been had, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item we're moving on to is reminder, uh, letter B under new business, um, we did hand out the sidewalk ice and snow removal compliance, and these are friendly reminders for neighborhoods. Uh, many people do not shovel properly, have not properly treated with sand and or salt. The ice, I get many comments from neighbors, and Public Works goes out and either has to remove the sand, I mean, remove the ice and or snow, or, um, they ask the owner to do so. So, um, this is something that reminds everyone, I am publicly reminding everyone that it is the town law that, um, they must, within twelve hours, shovel sidewalks after a snowstorm. And the town of Portland requires that the snow be removed within twelve hours after a snowfall, and you may receive a notice from the town if you don't comply, and you could be charged. And we do send invoices for, um, the fact that we have to sometimes do the snow removal. Fortunately, um, there has been, um, not two feet of snow at a time, it's been a little bit easier this year, but still in all, a lot of people um, are not being respected in terms of their ability to walk on sidewalks, and we need to remind everyone who has a sidewalk in front of their home or their business, that they must remove the snow and ice and treat the the ice with appropriate material.
And if you guys don't need these, we'll get back to Susan to say, text her.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Recycle.
The next item is the resolution upholding the ban on fracking waste, I'm gonna turn it over to Lou.
Okay.
Who was a member and is our liaison to Clean Energy Task Force.
And I I wanna thank Andy for coming forward, and I, I remember, we talked about this, and we fought for it, I think Ben was here, and I think Mike was on the board, as well as Susan. And the thing that stro- struck me the most was that when Andy asked us to give the presentation, uh, each one of us from the committee talked a little bit about the things that are happening in Pennsylvania and Ohio and stuff like that, and the the pictures that showed a pool liner in a field, filled with this toxic waste, that was open, so if it rained a lot, or snowed, and then melted, you know that that would be filled, and it would be just like the pool, after a while, it fills and it overflows. That's what's happening in those states. I'd hate to see that happening here in Connecticut, where somebody said, I can make lots of money because I have lots of land, I could put in a pool or a few pools, and I can put this waste in there, and there it stays, but it doesn't stay in that one spot, and it's just pretty much like a pool liner. It's not really like a two or three inch thick, you know, liner, uh, this is a pool liner, maybe a little thicker. And you know that pools eventually, the liners deteriorate, and I'm sure that if there's these acids in there, it probably would eat away the plastic, and it would and it probably is happening in Pennsylvania and Ohio. So, with that said, um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, uh, Senate Bill Number seven fifty-three, an act concerning the statewide ban on fracking waste, and I'm not gonna read this cuz Andy read it as well, or already.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion?
You know, we, uh, it was, it was said a little bit earlier in public comment, and again, Andy, thank you for coming forward with this, um, the fact is, when you look at our water sources, and that's one of the big debates we have going forward, it's where we're gonna get good, clean drinking water from. Um, they're, they're somewhat limited at times, so we have to protect them. I think this is important, when you see what's happening in other states.
I'd like to thank you for your work on this and all your good environmental work that you do, and, um, nice job.
And I'm, tomorrow, there is another meeting of CCM, the Legislative Committee, I will bring the resolution with us, I anticipate this will pass. Um, and encourage, uh, other municipalities that have such ordinances, that they take a look at, uh, our resolution and perhaps adopt it as well. Thank you, Andy.
To go to the LOB and deliver this to Christie and Norm.
Very good.
And, uh, I intend to do it as well, with, uh, the pool.
Thank you, and thank you to the rest of the Clean Energy Task Force, um, you do a lot of work for us, we appreciate it. Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Nice, thank you. The next item is refunds of excess payments. Jim?
Sure. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to reimburse, um, Robert A. Morse seventy-eight dollars and three cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to refund thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents to Phyllis Jakubiak.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Status and committee reports. Any updates?
Well, I just have one, uh, comment to make, is that Norm Beadleman is, uh, looking for support on solar farms on the side of highways in the state of Connecticut, on state-owned property. Uh, when I drive through Massachusetts and New Jersey and New York and stuff like that, Vermont, especially Vermont, I see these farms, and I said, gee, you know, they're thinking of sustainability, and I think that when I hear that Norm is pushing this with, uh, within the state, um, I think it's a good thing. And I think that, uh, if we move forward in that direction, and maybe move forward in other sustainable energy, I know we talked about one time about putting a a turbine at the end of the water treatment plant, and I know you can do that, and I know you can do the the generation of electricity with with waves, just within the Long Island Sound, so. And there's probably some other type of resp- uh, a sustainability something, you know? I mean, we we all talk about wind, solar, and and water, or or hydro, uh, but who knows? There might be a chip out there, there might be something in the cloud that says, oh, we can generate electricity by just doing X. And maybe that's our children's generation, they're gonna figure that out for us, but, um, I think that Norm is on the right track.
The only thing I'd add from our standpoint is that we were out there today with a meeting, and, um, the engineers and the contractors are working with the town, they work through, begin the process, and looking what they need to do, what they need to give to the town to make sure they're working the process for the buildings, so that keeps on going on, that's probably the only thing, obviously, with the weather, they're kinda limited in what they can do, but as soon as the weather gets better, they'll be willing.
Sure.
And there's a dog park being next weekend.
Weather permitting.
And, uh, Main Street Beautification Committee met last night, um, I don't know if anyone was able to go to that, uh, look forward to getting a report on their activities soon. And inform, uh, excuse me, public comment. Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I write notes down, I go through the whole meeting here. I I just wanted to say one quick thing, Dave Murphy for the Carousel Drive, is that, I don't know who, how many of you have dogs, but my dog's a family member, I treat it as a second child. So if you were to rip my dog away from me, and I had to go through this circumstance, there'd be a forced sale outside of my house right now, I believe. That's to the degree I was serious about this. And the other part, I I think is very unfair, is he dangled the fence trainer in front of him as this is an avenue to get his dog back, and then yanked that out at the last minute, so. I don't know all the details, but it just, it sounds very unfair.
There are, there are, you are, there are details.
So.
There are details, and, uh, that can be shared with you, um, at some point, because.
Okay, and and the last thing. Sorry. Yeah, and the last thing I'll say is you are setting a precedent, and and my expectation would be the next dog bite, this will have to go on that same path. And I would encourage Mr. Bell to sue the town of Portland if that next person is treated any differently. So you are setting a precedent, and I would encourage him to do that, just like our last selectman used to encourage other people if they didn't get their way, to sue the town.
Now, keep in mind, the precedence would be.
That's interesting.
Just keep, keep in mind, the precedence would be in the next dog bite situation, that, uh, animal control officer would probably.
Dog bite and.
No, 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 you have to take the whole precedence, the the dog bite, the animal control officer will put the dog down, so we would expect the animal control officer to do the same thing, because the animal control officer was actually. So we would expect the animal control officer to do the same thing, because the animal control officer was actually upheld in her decision, and then it went to court. If all of those same events occurred, I would agree with you. Maybe a re, a, a resolution for settlement should be similar. Then you have precedence.
There's also, there's also.
So, that would be the only precedence I see.
There's been some mention, Ben, of the, um, of the Department of Agriculture recommending some changes, um, to the animal, they call them the bite laws. And whether or not those will be even heard by the legislature, they don't know. But the task force has put together some criteria that would be helpful to animal control officers. And, um, that will proceed to the legislature, whether or not they call a public hearing, or whether or not they're able to proceed with that, it's up to them. And I think it's also important to point out, um, in, in light of the emotions associated with the topic, that there are many, many, um, documents associated with this case, uh, most of which, if not all of which, are public. And they're, they've been shared, and the Commissioner of Agriculture, the state veterinarian that is employed by the Department of Agriculture, was the hearing officer and wrote a whole, uh, report on the matter, concurring with the town of Portland's decision. Um, a gentleman of great experience in this area, not only legal, but medical, as well as, um, animal control. And there was a behaviorist that reviewed Rocky a few years ago, that was hired by Mr. Bell, that made recommendations for, um, the only eventuality of the dog to be returned, which were quite, quite, um, clearly elucidated in his report. There was a trainer that worked with Mr. Bell, and he came up with a number of requirements very similar to what the behaviorists did. Mr. Bell and I together spoke to the behaviorist over the telephone in my office. And, um, the behaviorist was invited to a mediation hearing, um, by Mr. Bell. And it was five minutes before the meeting that Mr. Bell's attorney recommended that the behaviorist not attend. Um, furthermore, when the, um, owner put some changes into the property that he has, it did not meet up with what the behaviorists had recommended. And feeling that he hadn't been listened to, and that the issue had become such that he couldn't help anymore, he did resign. He felt that it was not an appropriate time. Um, should also be pointed out that, in the beginning, the dog, um, Rocky did, um, leave its property, went across the street, and viciously bit a, a man. Um, the dog got away from the victim, returned to the property. Within minutes, went back at the man again to attack, and it was only because a passing car came by, and the dog was able to, to, uh, the, the man was able to get away from the dog. Furthermore, um, testimony is that the dog left the property again the second day, the day or two after, I'm not sure if it was.
The, the very next day.
The very next day. And there was another gentleman walking by, and the dog attacked a bag that the man had, happened to have, uh, something from a grocery store. Um, so, together with all of that testimony, as well as the experts, as well as the fact that Mr. Bell is exercising his legal rights through his attorney to appeal this decision. This has not been decided, the court hasn't even set a date for us to return. What we're trying to do is to avoid further court matters and time, and further time for Rocky to be in the pound. But the owner has to agree to what our proposal is, and/or work with us on the proposal. So, this board is exercising, I think, a lot of, um, effort, and a lot of very careful, um, determination. So, it's, it's not with, um, light hearts that we proceed. We're trying to do our best as a board. Thank you.
I'm sorry, are you still in public comment?
I don't think we have any more, um, status and committee reports. I went through public comment, we're on general discussion, but I will allow it. As long as it's not too long, Melissa.
Yeah, it'll be quick.
You don't have to get up, but you may.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Somebody made the comment, and I don't remember who it is, I'm sorry, about, um, the, you know, the attorney, and how it's money well spent. I'm paraphrasing, that's not what was said.
I didn't say it's about being well spent.
But.
But he said, the reason is right, whereas it shouldn't be to avoid spending money on litigation, it should be what's to do the right thing.
I'm so glad you clarified, thank you. So, when the two police dogs bit the two people that they bit, do, can, is, where can we get a copy of the ACO report, as well as a behavioral report from those? Because those dogs are still alive, right?
Well, one of those was in Portland, right, Susan?
Correct.
Oh, let's just say it was one, let's just say it was one.
A different, uh, a different.
Did somebody?
Sorry, different animal control officer ruled on that one, correct?
So, it fluctuates based on the person?
No, one was many years ago, Melissa, I don't remember the circumstances. If you would like the report, you.
Oh, I definitely would, definitely would.
It's been released, um, I think, um, I think Kim and/or her daughter.
Oh, reach out to Kim, thank you.
I, I think, but if not, we'd be happy to.
Okay. I'm not going to reiterate everything that Mr. Murphy so eloquently put, because I agree with him one hundred percent. Um, I am a dog owner, I used to show German Shepherds when I was a kid. I have been bit by horses, cows, pigs, chickens, ducks, goats. That's just the way it is, you know, you get bit. Um, there's a difference between a bite and a sustained attack. A bite is a puncture wound. A bite, a doctor says, no, we probably not gonna stitch this up, because it can get infected. Um, I did not know how, um, susceptible humans are for dog bites, until I was attacked by a dog and sustained, how many stitches? I can't remember, it was well over forty, to my arm and my throat, because it was a sustained attack. Came up, I pushed, it came back, I pushed, it came to, it got me in the throat, and I don't remember anything else. So, when you're talking about attacks and bites and things like that, I consider myself a little bit of an expert in this, and I can tell you that there is a difference. I can tell you that every puncture wound, bite, they're scary, they're bloody. But I can tell you that a sustained attack, when your arm is hanging open, and your throat has a pretty good gash on it, that's something you remember. When you remember the bite going into your arm and the blood shooting out, you remember that. Remember it pretty well. And that, my friends, is a sustained attack. So I just wanted to let you know, there's a clear and distinct difference.
What happened to that dog?
That decision, and again, because I have been, I have handled dogs in the past, um, that was something that was my decision, because it was my dog, that we could not risk that type of behavior. Um, my daughter-in-law is maybe a hundred pounds, if she's lucky, and the idea of her being hurt is not something that I could ever live with. So, I made an extraordinarily difficult decision that still chokes me up. You know, I, I loved him, but it was a decision that I believe that there was something, um, I don't know if mentally is the proper way to put it, but there was something off with the dog. You know, he would just, to turn so quickly. This was a dog that I literally, I went to bed, the dog was beside me. I had a cookie, the dog had half of it, just, and in just one day, it, out of nowhere. And this is a lab. So, again, this isn't something where I'm sitting on the sidelines, 'cause I know some of y'all probably think I like to just get up here and chatter. But this is something that is near and dear to my heart, you know? I take animal rights seriously. Again, it's something I, I, oh, I've always had them. There hasn't been a time in my life that I have not had a pet share my bed, my food, my car, everything else, so.
And I don't believe these were just puncture wounds, were there stitches in this case also?
There were, according to the documentation that I saw, it was two stitches. The two stitches being, um, puncture wounds. And again, I mean, I can show you what an attack and a rip looks like, 'cause it's pretty nasty. And there's, you know, there is a distinct difference. Because like, down here is a puncture, where it's ripped apart here, those are tears. And then, this is a tear, then it was nasty. I mean, it's pretty scary, not gonna lie. But that's it, that's my story, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Under follow-up items, um, the proposed land swap, I know Lou, you had given me some information on that. Do you want that on the agenda next time? Is that ready to go?
I don't know, I haven't heard back from the exchange bill. So as soon as I hear back from them, I think then it would be appropriate.
Okay, so let me know.
Yeah, as far as the land swap of the Swedish cemetery, I'm not sure where that is.
That's going to a public hearing.
Okay, that's right. Good.
So with that, um, I'll undertake a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of possible land acquisition.
So moved.
In the Riverfront, Brownstone Avenue. Motion made by Jim and seconded by Lou, uh, Mike.
Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, it's nine, twelve.